We have properties, we expect property owners to keep up their properties and manage their properties. In some ways, us not doing that and trying to move this management of this system is, it's really just, it's not acceptable. So, I respectfully request the approval of the RFP so we can move the city parking management system into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Captain Busick while he's at the stand, if you will? Questions for Captain Busick? Not for Captain Busick, we don't really allow cross questions. If there are comments from the public, comments from the public.
Madam Mayor and members of council, I'm Astrid, the owner of The Plains Hotel at 1600 Central Avenue. We are extremely excited about seeing the downtown increase traffic and income. I just am not sure if $600,000 being spent over the next three years for the ability to ticket people is the best use of the public's funds and the interest of downtown. I made a point earlier that $13,300 was taken in March out of probably not even $50,000 of income to the 40 businesses downtown. That is a really large amount that was lost. I also have employees and patrons that juggle around with the downtown and I am looking forward to making sure that we do write tickets and receive monies. Personally, I still feel like going back to about $15 per ticket was more genteel and offering downtown businesses and employees some sort of a ability to pay a little less at the parking garage is what I would offer. I was under the impression, the last meeting I attended, that the income from our parking tickets was $150,000 and that the cost to implement parking revenue was $350,000. So, that number may have been different from last week and I don't know if that makes a lot of difference, but I just want to say that I believe that we have a very fragile downtown that is only 25% occupied right now, that we should be very careful in how severely we ticket people and when. And I have to say that the local downtown retailers I've spoken with don't have enough income nine months of the year to really pony up extended parking for their patrons. So, there's a few things that I get concerned about and I just want to make sure that we're doing the right thing to support this fragile downtown to increasing another 15 stores and not for sure lose any. Thank you very much.
Are there questions for Astrid? Questions for Astrid? I have one. It's my understanding that the issue before us is actually for control within the parking garage. Is that not what you understand that to be and would you not want people to utilize the garage?
We've had a garage that's had some not payers, is what Chief Busick is saying, which I think would be nice if we did do that. But I understand it's a $600,000 program to implement that in two garages, I believe. So, I just want to know, you know, I want people to think, is that a really good use of the public funds considering we're not New York City, we're not Fort Collins yet? We've got to take a look at the field that we are implementing this parking program in. And the field we're currently in is a very fragile downtown in my experience with a lot of the shop owners just barely making it, not even hardly hiring employees. So, I just want to make sure that we're really thinking, where are we at right now implementing a strict parking program? I feel may have weakened downtown. So, I'm just concerned about moving any of that forward.
Thank you. I don't believe those numbers are correct, but if we could, I don't, $600,000, I don't, it's not over one year and two garages. Captain Busick, could you please, for clarification again, just refresh this again as far as the cost and again, what the system is within the garages? Thank you.
Okay, so, Madam Mayor, the system basically is for the two parking structures and then the surface lot that's over there north of 17th Street, I believe, and Warren. So, the cost is upfront, there's going to be a $420,000 cost associated with this and then there's maintenance fees, the second and third year of $77,000. I, again, draw your attention to the fact that we have over 200 people not paying at all and if we get half of those people to pay, I would expect there'd be more that would pay for their permit. That more than covers the maintenance fees as we move forward. When these types of systems are put in place, I mean, obviously something's broken. If we can have that many people in these garages and they're not, they're not, they're not held accountable for that. The idea isn't to write people tickets. The idea is to get everyone to follow the rules and for this to be fair for everybody. So, and as far as the other numbers, I'm not sure what are the numbers that are being referred to. We have the permits total, I have the permits total is typically on over a five-year period was an average of $350,000 in permits. And those are permits that are purchased by state government, county government, private businesses, law firms, various businesses buy annual permits for their employees for various reasons. And so, that's a substantial, to me is a substantial amount of revenue. The fine, the parking permit fines, I certainly can touch on that. It's, I didn't average this out, but on this table, I would say this average looks like about $75,000 a year to $80,000 a year in fines, parking fines. So, that's, that would be that average. I'm not sure if I answered her question or not, but...
Thank you very much. Any other public discussion on this matter? Any further public discussion? Discussion by council?
Do we have to pick a motion?
Oh, I apologize.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Elaine West, resident at 422 Stampede Circle and also a member of the DDA Board. I come here because I'm passionate about downtown and parking is a crucial element of downtown. I'd like to repeat the comments I made at Finance Committee in this regard. I think we need to start considering whether we, what the goal is here. I'm hearing different goals. One, we need access to parking or do we need enforcement? I say we need a balance between the two. I would like to throw out some ideas because I don't think some things have been thought through. We're trying to get employees out of the parking in front of storefronts. I think there should be some encouragement for employees and property owners, et cetera, to be able to purchase a permit and then park in the upper levels of the parking structure, just an idea, but that might encourage some more accessing use. I also think that we need to seriously start looking at restriping the streets, some of the one-way streets on one side to increase the parking. And I just want to share those ideas with you so that we don't limit this discussion to just thinking this is a one-time, we do this and all is solved. I think this issue is larger than that and this discussion needs to go on in the year to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for Ms. West? Questions for Ms. West? Are you aware that there is a parking committee? And if not, I think that you'd be welcome to be a part of it because I think this is just one step of a larger discussion, as you mentioned.
Well, thank you very much.
Would you like to be on that committee?
I'm on three committees right now, so it's a balancing act. So, tell me about it and maybe I would be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there discussion? Mr. Denine?
Hello, I'm John Denine, 415 West 17th Street Downtown and Councilman and Madam Mayor. I wanted to speak briefly about my support for moving ahead with the plan to do the RFP 1618. Obviously, I'm interested in the downtown and in parking in general because parking is, has a huge impact on the downtown. But specifically, I became even more interested in this through your people's actions that created the effort through the MPO that put together the analysis that you hired Kim Lee Horn to do. And they had some really, really good meetings. So, I wanted to address the fact that that proposal that you funded and had done, while it's incredibly long, 1,200 pages, you should be shot for handing somebody 1,200 pages, but at any rate, that, those meetings were excellent. And that Kim Lee Horn organization, they did a terrific job. So, when you guys put that together and hired those people, that was a great move. They brought in some speakers that talked to some of the meetings about real-life solutions, what had worked in other communities, how to go about getting a handle on parking, boiled it down to 10 bullet points, although the period in the 1,200 pages was that. But nonetheless, it really is good stuff and they ran a really, really organized and good thing. The MPO and you guys did a terrific job getting it to that point. And I also applaud the efforts that you have done in changing the enforcement and assigning that or somehow talking Cheyenne Police Department into taking that over. I think it shows great promise and this piece of the puzzle does a whole lot to get you to even further down the road. It is my opinion that while I agree with Astrid and The Plains Hotel's opinions about the fragility of downtown and you have to be careful, supporting this and voting for it and spending the $575,000 is not, does not mean that you have to enforce the existing rules. What this does is give you data so that you can make better choices and better decisions in the future, rather than just getting potshots and people saying, well, there's no parking in front of my place and the different things. This proposal gives you the data you need to be able to make really, really good choices and knowing what they are. Being able to survey who's parked where, what license numbers, what time, it's incredibly powerful information. And in the really nice Kim Lee Horn survey, it suggests that you proceed with doing that, which obviously that's what you did. You wouldn't have asked for the proposal to get put together and all this to get this far. So, my encouragement is, I think you've done a great job so far and ask you to please drag this across the finish line or the parlance of World Cup to score the goal by hiring this so that you can get the rest of the information. You can still change what you charge for parking, how you enforce things, but you can do it equitably, knowing what you're doing, by passing this so that you have the data so that you say, if we lower the fee for this or we say, okay, city employees and downtown employees can park on the third floor. I mean, you can quantify all those things if you go ahead and do this proposal. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Denine. Questions for Mr. Denine? All right. Further questions by the public? Further questions by the public? All right, questions? No, it goes back to, I'm sorry, I lost it. It's Mr. White.
Madam Mayor, the recommendation from the Finance Committee is to approve the contract with Passport Labs Inc. of Charlotte, North Carolina in an amount not to exceed $574,258. And I so move.
Second.
Move by Mr., move by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Discussion by council.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
The last two weeks, ever since my outburst last time on this topic, which I didn't intend to pull off consent, but that's what happened. So, I want to first thank Officer Malatesta for actually spending 40 minutes with me in front of the parking garage and explaining to me what was actually going on and then talking with the various business owners.
I want to thank Astrid for her com, or excuse me, Elaine, for her comments at the Finance Committee because that was when I went to the downtown business owners that I talked to and then I've had talks with Captain Busick and Chief Kozek in regards to this. So, the business owners, like Captain Busick said, in regards to hair appointments that go over two hours, tattoos that go over two hours, basically on this one, it gives the offer of validation, which is $4 a day. And so, if they're able to add $4 to a tattoo or $4 to a haircut to validate your parking for the entire day so you can be in there as long as you need to and you're, you know, if we're going to allot a certain floor, you know, for validated parking as well as, as well as the employee parking on the different tiered floors. Most of the downtown business owners I talked to were encouraged by this. One of the things that's been brought up all the time is safety. And so, by creating this density of individuals that use the facility, it's going to cause less people that want to actually do more damage to your vehicle, property and likewise because there's so much more pedestrian traffic going back and forth between their vehicles because they're actually allowed to park there. And so, I've discussed with the Police Department in regards to the balloon payment for the bond in regards to, after we recoup some of this funding that went into the, you know, over this three-year period for the multiple facilities and then we can actually start putting some of this money to actually pay for the garage that is currently outstanding. Granted, it won't pay for all of it, but at least we'll take a chunk out of it and it's one of those things that may come up to close to paying itself, which is, should be the intent of all government facilities. And so, after all my conversations in the last two weeks with multiple individuals, I actually came to the conclusion that I was going to support the purchase of this and so I just wanted everyone to know that, thank you for all your time, emails and everything that you've given to me over the last two weeks on this topic. I know that it was probably a burden, but I think that you answered everything that I really wanted to know and took the time to educate me on your point of view so I could pass that on to other people amongst the community. So, thank you, everyone, for your hard work this last two weeks.
Thank you. Other discussion by council? Further discussion by council?
Madam Mayor.
Mr. Cook.
You know, I have a lot of the same thoughts that Mr. Johnson does on this subject and I know, it is scary, Mr. Cook. Hey, great minds think alike sometimes. But I, like Mr. Johnson said and like everybody else up here has done, you know, I spot, I spoke, Spock, yeah. I don't even know. I spoke to Elaine and I also have spoken to Astrid as well. And I appreciate Mr. Denine's comments because that was really sort of my biggest fear is that, you know, we would be committing to something that we don't necessarily have all the answers to at this point by accepting this and that is my hope and it is my belief anyway that certainly by engaging this technology in order to provide us the data, I'm certainly hoping anyway that we are not locking ourselves into, you know, okay, we have to, we have to, you know, charge this amount or that amount. I want to ensure that we have the flexibility to where if we do notice that we have lost a certain amount of volume going in and out of the garages that, you know, we need to have the wherewithal to say, okay, well, is it because of what we're charging? You know? Is that something that can adjust to bring people back? Because I do agree and I do, and I do feel it is true that it is a fine line between, you know, is this going to, is this going to encourage people to come downtown? Or is this going to be a deterrent? So, I think it's a fine line that we have to walk and we have to be very cognizant of the fact that we are really going to have to pay attention to, you know, how many people are coming in and out of the garages, the lots, you know, those types of areas as opposed and continue to track that as we move forward. I think that's going to be very important because I think, you know, that the price of the permits and so forth could be such that there could be a direct correlation if we see a large dip in those numbers. So, I just hope that's something that we keep in mind moving forward with this. I do 100% agree with, you know, engaging more of this technology and supporting this tonight, but we must keep a very close eye on, again, like Astrid said, you know, if the pendulum swings too far in one direction, we may not be able to get it back. So, I think we have to just pay very close attention to, are we driving people away or are we encouraging them to come downtown?
Thank you. Is there further discussion on this matter? Further discussion? All right, hearing done. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Next item is number 26C, consideration of bid number E-29-18 for furnishing 18 police vehicles with the equipment installed for the Cheyenne Police Department, 2015 to 2018, 1% sales tax.
Thank you. Let's hear report on the vehicles.
Lieutenant Rob Defoe, Police Department, Madam Mayor, Council. So, before you is this annual, typical annual bid for the Police Department for replace vehicles, replacement vehicles. I did want to point out and just remind the council that the Police Department is responding to 77,000 calls a year and that that results in us putting out about a million and a half miles on our vehicles annually, which is a lot. This particular bid is a replacement bid with the exception of three additional vehicles to sustain the approval in the last budget for our three new positions, a CSO supervisor, a cat officer and hit-and-run traffic officer. Also was mentioned in Finance that this is a turnkey-type bid in regards to, historically, we've always sent out a bid to the vehicle provider and then a second bid to the upfitter who provided the upfitting of the equipment that's in the police vehicle, computers, lighting, et cetera. We found that this is a much more streamlined process and the biggest benefit is we've seen is the warranty itself actually doesn't start till we take delivery of the road-ready police vehicle where before, if we took the vehicle from the dealership, the warranty started at that point and it may be another six to eight months before that vehicle was on the road as a Police Department vehicle. We find that to be very beneficial and this is what we've done the last two years, I believe, and it's been very positive. We have one dealership respond to this bid. We support and we would encourage you to approve this bid as written.
Thank you. Are there questions?
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Lieutenant Defoe, I see that a lot of these, we're looking at F-150s and util, sport utilities. Is that a trend you see moving toward that and getting out of this, the basic cars?
It is, through Madam Mayor. Throughout the police industry across the country, SUVs, trucks and more of a heavy-duty suspension vehicle are seeing that they last longer. We run generally between four and six years for a patrol vehicle, the old Crown Bix, the two-wheel-drive vehicles. Where now, we have pretty much switched our paradigm to SUVs, as much of the country has for that very reason, you're just getting a longer lifespan out of those vehicles.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there questions? Are there questions? All right, thank you very much. Is there other public comment? Any further public comment? Hearing done. Mr. White?
Madam Mayor, the motion to accept the bid from Spradley Bar Motors of Cheyenne in an amount not to exceed $797,400 failed. Therefore, there is no recommendation from the Finance Committee on this item.
I would move to approve.
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was confused. It was moved to approve by Mr. Weibel and seconded by Mr. Johnson. All right. Further discussion by council? Further discussion by council?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
I guess, once again, thank you to staff for educating me. I was one of the no votes in Finance last week in regards to some of these questions, especially in regards to the trucks and some of the CSO vehicles. What we were explained is with the CSO, they actually, they're changing their dynamic where they're actually reporting to vehicle collisions and so they assist with the tow truck drivers to get the debris off the road as quickly as possible. And so, that debris is put into the back of the pickup truck. They've been picking up bicycles that have been stolen and just ghost-rid, I guess, into somebody's yard. And so, those bicycles were tearing up the inside of seats of the cars and so those were getting put into the backs of trucks as well as other debris, you know, on city streets, a tree branch, whatever. It was small enough to be picked up and put in and discarded of. And so, that was the explanation as to why, you know, they had more access for trucks and things of that nature.
Thank you. Is there any other further discussion by council? Further discussion by council? All right, hearing done. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion passes.
Next item is 26D, consideration of bid number E-26-18 for furnishing one new 2019 cabin chassis, four-by-four with utility body installed for the City of Cheyenne Traffic Division, 2015 to 2018, 1% sales tax.
Thank you.
Vicki Nemec, Public Works. This is a replacement for our sign installation truck. It, the truck provides services for over 10,000 signs that we have in the city. Each year, we replace approximately a tenth of those signs and then we obviously do repair work on signs as well. The current truck is the 2007 GMC with 46,908 miles, probably a little more right now that we're trading in. We're also trading in two additional trucks, two additional vehicles. The problem with the current sign truck is the crane and the body are both failing. Over years of pounding those signs in, it really takes its toll. So, we've had to continually weld the body on that vehicle in the past few years and the crane is at the point of almost failure and we're never, we're not going to be able to repair it anymore. We'd like to replace it before that happens. We've also had some problems with the engines and brakes and it's really getting to the point where repairs are more costly than replacing. I've also asked all of our divisions to look for opportunities to reduce our fleet, so we're trading in three vehicles instead of one. These vehicles have either served their purpose or passed their useful life and I recommend approval.
Thank you. Are there questions of Ms. Nemec?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Johnson?
I guess, since you brought up the crane being broke, is the crane that's broken on the vehicle that's being traded in for the, that has 8,000 miles that we're getting 21,000, is that the same vehicle that is broken?
Mayor, through you to Mr. Johnson, no, that's not. The 2007 GMC truck is the current sign truck. The truck with the tower truck is the one with 8,361 miles. That truck, basically, since our electrician, several years ago, we lost our full-time electrician, he went to part-time and then our part-time electrician decided to leave us altogether. We advertised for a replacement for over a year and we were not able to hire for what we were willing to pay. So, we no longer have an electrician and we really haven't used that vehicle much since.
Okay. I guess, just since 2:00 this afternoon, have you had a chance to talk to the mayor about that $21,000 trade-in? Because I know that what we brought up at Finance and Craig said he had just seen the emails, but he just got back from vacation, so he didn't have a complete idea of how to digest it, but because we were looking to purchase a truck with fifth penny funds for the new Arborist, if this truck actually, you know, because to answer to the public, if it looked like we traded in one truck and only got 21,000, it had 8,000 miles on it and then all of a sudden we have another fifth penny expenditure for the Arborist truck for downtown, was this vehicle able to be used for the new Arborist downtown or, because he didn't really have too much as far as email threads with community events and recreation on whether or not they could pull this out of fleet and how this would affect your, how this would affect the bid going forward since you, if you were to pull a vehicle off of the trade-in?
Mr. Johnson, I've not had a chance to talk to Ms. Nemec about that, so I'm not sure if we can swap one crane lift vehicle for another, so... Vicki Nemec, through you, Mayor, to Mr. Johnson. I did, after I heard at the last Finance meeting that I was, that I attended, that Forestry was looking at purchasing a tower truck, I did contact them and asked them to take a look at it, which they did. Both Mr. Sanchez and the forester looked at that vehicle and it is, to what they Both Mr. Sanchez and the forester looked at that vehicle and it is, what they told me was that it's basically too big and not maneuverable enough to use in the downtown area. But I believe that they're here if you would like to speak to them about that.
Yeah, if they wouldn't mind.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Talk to us about nimble and tall or something.
Both of which I reflect.
I said chip for that.
Jason Sanchez, Community Recreation and Events. Madam Mayor, through you to Mr. Johnson. Ms. Nemec is absolutely correct. The truck only has a single boom and it's too large and cumbersome for us to be able to maneuver to do the work that is being required or asked of us for the downtown area.
Can you give an example? I mean, give me like, an example like a streetscape that, you know, you would say you were trimming or, you know, pruning that and then exact, because since the dimensions really aren't stated on how big the truck actually is, so when you, you know, say how it's too, you know, large to fit in the downtown core, give an example of like an existing street where it wouldn't work?
Madam Mayor, through you to Mr. Johnson. The best illustration I could give you is if I, if I asked you to drive a Suburban and park it downtown versus a small Kia and you're trying to maneuver that into parking areas or around vehicles, that's kind of the dilemma we're facing. And so our Forestry Division feels that with a smaller vehicle with more than a single boom is purchased, that's going to give us the best opportunity to maintain the trees downtown.
Okay. I guess as a follow, on topic, but they may think I'm off-topic. What are our hours of forestry? When do they actually come in?
Madam Mayor, through you to Mr. Johnson, six-thirty a.m. to three-thirty p.m.
Okay, and so around six-thirty, you know, to say seven-thirty, is there a lot of, do they, is that like where more meetings take place? So they, say they start at like seven-thirty to eight-thirty and that's when they start, when the traffic actually, you know, would impede this vehicle? Or is this something, you know, that simple cones can, you know, take place that, you know, for specific traffic on, on blocks that they're able to actually use this or, I mean, I'm just looking for variables, you know, because when we hear that the snowplow goes out, you know, super late at night, are they able to actually, you know, do more work or change hours if they were to, just to make sure that they could actually do the trees with no impediments? Because I guess regardless, regardless if the truck is big or not, if the tree branch falls, you know, on a car, you know, it's still going to do damage regardless of the size of the truck. So I guess, have we looked at how we're actually going to manage this program downtown, that this truck might be still usable when there's no cars parked there?
Madam Mayor, through you to Mr. Johnson. This is all pretty new to us with the downtown, but Mark Ellis, our city forester, has given considerable thought as to how we could do our job safely. The downtown person, perhaps we would have a different set of hours, but daylight also is an issue. We want to make sure that they're able to see what they're working on. Yes, we would block off and cone the area around the trees we're working. It's a matter of how we could get our vehicle in throughout the day because the majority of the work will be during business hours without occupying more than one or two, three spaces so we could get our vehicle in to do the work.
Okay. Do we know how much we actually paid for this vehicle originally, since we're getting a twenty-one thousand dollar trade-in value on it? That would be you.
Ms. Nemec?
Vicki Nemec, Public Works. I do not have that information. I could get it, but.
Prior to your time, maybe, possibly. Okay. Thank you.
Because basically, I was thinking ahead of, since we're going to, the intent was to pull those funds out of fifth penny to purchase a new vehicle, you know, it's still a concern of mine to just, you know, granted the size, even if you get the specs that now we're doing a hundred and three thousand dollar truck with three trade-ins and then, you know, in a couple of months, I'm going to, if I see a vehicle around the same amount that we didn't, you know, I still don't have my justification that we're not working with what we have and just making some modifications on scheduling and things like that that, to handle some of the safety requirements. I don't know if it, and granted, I don't know the price of the smaller vehicle of what we're about to pay, but, I mean, that just makes me uncomfortable knowing that we're doing a trade-in on something we might be able to use.
Right. Thank you. Other comments by Council? Any other comments by Council? Hearing done. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Okay, those opposed. Mr. Weibel, Mr. Luna, Mr. Johnson?
Madam Mayor, some clarification?
Yeah, thank you.
I believe that I had to make a motion.
Oh.
So.
I, I'm sorry, Mr. President distracted me. He wants to take a break, so I was rushing through. Okay, Mr. White?
Madam Mayor, the recommendation of the Finance Committee is to accept the bid from Spradley Bar Motors of Cheyenne in an amount not to exceed one hundred and three thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars, and I so move.
Second.
Okay, moved by Mr. White, seconded by Mr. Johnson. Ms. Nemec?
Vicki Nemec, Public Works. If I may ask, we could drop that trade and still go ahead with the purchase if you have no objection.
All right. Thank you. I think that that's a considerable move. So with that being said, Mr. Weibel?
I would move that we drop the two thousand three with eight thousand seven hundred and thirty-one miles for twenty-one thousand and, twenty-one thousand and three. It was a three. Two, what?
Twenty-one thousand six hundred.
Twenty-one thousand six hundred from the bid.
Okay, that's been moved.
Second.
And seconded by Mr. Luna. Discussion by the public. Discussion by Council.
Madam Mayor.
President, ready?
We've already been told that since we don't have an electrician on staff, that truck isn't used and it just sits there, so. And it seems that, listening to Mr. Sanchez, it wouldn't meet their needs either. So those that want to keep this truck, do they have, on the Council, do they have a use for it?
Do you want me to answer that?
Mr. Johnson?
Okay. Basically, since this truck has such low miles and it was actually the highest amount one on our trade-in, if this for any reason can be salvaged to use it for the tree care for any reason after it's reviewed and it's absolutely determined that it cannot be used, then I would hope that when we actually make our bid presentation for the smaller truck, that this one still is going to have minimal miles as well as get a trade-in value somewhat similar to this, that if it's not used for these purposes, we can trade it in for the actual vehicle that would be put towards the Arborist. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Yeah, what he said.
Okay. All right, we are back on the motion to amend. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
I guess.
Go, Mr. Johnson?
Is our actual amendment to, it is to remove the truck? Okay.
The amendment before you now is to remove the truck from the trade-in. All right. All those in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
No.
No.
Okay, that motion passes. We are back now on the main motion. Further discussion by the public. Further discussion by Council. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? That motion carries. We are going to take a ten? Is that five? Okay, five-minute break.